First item on the agenda is indication based allegiance of U.S. Texas flag, Captain G. H. Jones, Commissioner of the state.
Our Father our God, and more our Father, and thank you for this day, this is the day that you have ordained us, and we are going to rejoice and be glad in first by county jurors, our county commissions, as we do business for Brazos County, direct them, lead them, guide them in the right direction and in the right ways. Blessed are Brazos County for our standing, we pray for Texas, we pray for our government, we pray for America, we pray for our president, we pray for our troops, and we pray for all of our law enforcement officers who lies or injure the state, to help them and protect them. Now, God, he will give us throughout this day. And everybody says, "Thank you."
(Crosstalk). 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 (Crosstalk).
Thank you, Captain Jones. Second item on the agenda is call for citizens input and our concern. Here in none will your presentation discussions, first is the annual update for Brazos Valley groundwater conservation district.
Thank you, Judge Peters and commissioners, giving us the opportunity to come and give you the annual report, the 2016 annual report of Brazos Valley groundwater conservation district. It was, it was a very busy year. In your, I've given you a, an approved annual report, and there's also a set of Cliff Notes in there. It kind of highlights the things that really mattered during the year, and, and I'm gonna quickly go through some of those points. Of course, you know that you have two new board members representing Brazos County. Judge McDonald retired from the board, and he's been replaced with Jason Barfick for the city of Bryan. Same with Kent Watson, was our former member for, the board member for rural water supply, and Stephen Cast is now taking his place. And then you still have Mark Roba as representing agriculture for the county, and Bill Harris representing City of College Station. During the year in regional planning, the 2017 state water plan was adopted in July of 2016 by the Texas Water Development Board. We were involved in that process throughout the, the four years previous to that. That has been adopted, and we're, as a matter of fact, they're just getting ready to start the next round of planning, in April, so April the 5th. So, that process happens every five years, and you finish one, and you start the next one. Our groundwater management area 12, which is the five districts that sit over the Carrizo-Wilcox, being mid-east Texas to our east, that's, would be Madison, Leon, Freestone Counties, Brazos Valley being Brazos and Robertson, Post Oak Savannah groundwater district, which is Mylaman, Burleson, Lost Pines, being Lee and Bastrop, and Fayette County. Those five districts comprise groundwater management area 12. We met several times during 2016, and in April of 2016, we adopted the proposed desired future conditions for our eight aquifers that, that we manage here. That went to a, and during the summer months, we had our public comment period for everyone to weigh in on that. We've now gotten all those comments back, we've gone through those, recognized and, read through, and anything that we felt needed to be incorporated into the process, that was taken into account. We are now at, just on the cusp, be the 27th of April of this year, we will probably be actually adopting those desired future conditions, and so that, that should be happening soon. But that process, and of course, that process begins again every five years, so it'll just immediately kick back up and start over again. Our monitoring well system, we have 144 wells at this time in all eight of our aquifers, and of course, as you know, we use those static water level measurements as our, the basis to manage the aquifers. That's how we determine, and we'll use those for our desired future conditions and any curtailment that may have to happen many decades from now. Our proposed DFC, or desired future condition for the Simsborough, I know that's the one that everybody is, is really, looks toward, will be, is likely to be 295 feet of artesian reduction across the entire district. So it's an average from wells that are in the low down dip in our area, up to the outcrop up near Bremont. And we average those static water levels, and if our desired future can, can condition, it cannot exceed 295 feet over the next, well, through 2070, so we've still got about 53 years out. At this point, we just did a, for the board, we just did a, where are we as far on, on that glide path towards that desired future condition? And we've used of our, of that 295 feet to date, from year 2000 to now, we've used about 28 feet, or 28 feet of reduction in artesian reduction, and that's about 10%, give or take. Our groundwater model said we should have already used 70, 71, 72 feet. So, we, we know the groundwater model has some flaws to it. It's the best science that we have right now. The groundwater district, two years ago, along with Post Oak Savannah, we, we put in $130,000 toward the improvement of the groundwater model. Post Oak Savannah put in $230,000, the groundwater, the water development board put in, I think, 320,000. And together, we're gonna be able to begin to look more at the interaction between the aquifers. We, we know there's probably a, they substantially overestimate the interaction between, especially in the Wilcox group, Simsborough, Calvert-Bluff, and Hooper. When you pump on one, they, we know it significantly overestimates what happens in the others. Faulting, the different faults that are there, they, they tend to, it overestimates the effect of those faults. And we know also that recharge is another thing that they, the model really doesn't have a good handle on. So we'll, we'll be seeing that model come out probably in 2018, and that'll be the one, and we expect it to be much improved, and that'll be the one we'll use in our next round of planning. So, that's, that's been a significant improvement for us. Our fees have stayed the same as they were in 2015 for 2016, and they will be the same for 2017. And so you'll know, we, on any public water supply, we are discounting, it used to be four and a quarter cents per thousand, per thousand gallons produced. We're now discount and rebate to any public water supply, for the first 100 million gallons they produce, it's only at three and a quarter cents rather than four and a quarter cents. So we're continuing to do that. This'll be the third year that we've had that, that program. Our grant program, the one thing I will talk about there is that, three years ago, we instituted the lawn irrigation network, that we put the footprint over Bryan College Station, 18 weather stations and, and wireless rain gauges out there, and granted some money for a website to be put in, a webmaster, that being A&amp;M through City College Station, and all that, the information is, is gathered, and email pushes are sent out, you can go to the website, and it shows you exactly how much you need to water at your particular location within that 180 mile footprint sitting over Bryan and College Station. It's, College Station, Bryan, Wixson SUD, and Welborn SUD have all been parties to it. City of Bryan actually is part of the program, and they didn't take any grant money, they just went ahead and used their, their assets to, to be a part of this. And we think it's been a, a rousing success. We, after three years, the board said, "We need to see if there's been any effect. Has, has this been effective?" And so in September, when we were doing our budget, we went to the website and said, "Okay, how many hits? How many, how many hits have we had on this website?" And from March the 15th to the 1st of September, we had 167,000 hits. We know there's lots of traffic though, and, and we know that's probably grown over time. One of the things that we know has driven a lot of traffic there is that the board last year spent $21,000 to put up conservation tips on TV. We're doing three to four a week, driving them to the website, talking about, you know, how we can do a better job on, on watering our lawns, how we can do a better job of things inside the house to conserve water. Matter of fact, to the point where now we're going up year round with those, rather than just nine months out, or eight months out of the year, we're gonna go up year round. Spend 31,000 this year. We know that that's been the thing that's driven people to the website and to get the email pushes for the watering. So, we, we feel that that grant money has been, has been extremely effective. And our rules, I'll quickly tell you, we did in January of last year, they adopted our rule 7.2, which is a enforcement of the desired future conditions. So when the time comes, out, again, likely many decades from now, there'll be a system in place to where it gives triggering levels, gives everybody notice long before there's any type of curtailment or any type of, we've, we've reached the DFC, we can't legally, by law, by statute, we can't exceed those desired future conditions. It gives everybody plenty of time, many, many years, to be able to prepare for, okay, here's where we're gonna be down the road. So we got that put in, in, in January. We did have an unintended consequence. We put some words in a place where they didn't need to be, and it, it, it meant things. So we came back and we fixed that. We took that unintended consequence out. And the other thing that we did this past year is because our well monitoring program is actually used for those curtailments that may happen long out, then they seriously mean things. So we developed a very strict protocol for doing any of our well measurements, whether it's with an E-line, a pressure transducer, a steel tape, or an airline. We follow a very strict protocol because we want those measurements to mean something. They're gonna mean something, we want them to be as exact as possible. So we got that in this year. One other thing, in the grant program, we do a well plugging, and this past year, we plugged 12 deteriorated or abandoned wells, and the district grants up to $1,000 per well, depending on the cost of the well, do 75% of the cost of the plugging up to $1,000 on our side. And we finally have the well drillers out there that are going, "Okay, that makes sense." They've gotten, getting the word out more so that we can get some of these wells that, that are just sitting there deteriorating or otherwise never be used, go ahead and get them plugged. So I think we'll see more and more use of that program in the, in the future. Last thing I'll say, and then, is that, I hadn't talked about education at all, and that's one thing that we probably, we do, I'll say this, we do it better than anybody else in the state. Nobody tries to do it to the level we do it. And because of that, we hired Megan Haas last June to come in and be the educational coordinator and take on some more of the education. We ended up doubling the size of what we do now, where, and I, I'd like to introduce Megan, and I'd like to have her come up and give you the educational report.
Okay, with our education, we're currently in every fourth, fifth, and seventh grade classroom in both Brazos County and Robertson County, but so in College Station and Bryan ISD. In fourth grade, we go in, we bring them a Major Rivers book that the Texas Water Development Board put together, and then we come in with our model aquifer, we teach them what an aquifer is, how they can start conserving water in fourth grade. Then we come back, and in the fifth grade, we see them again, we bring the model aquifer again, we talk to them more about how the aquifers were formed, give them a broader idea of what the aquifers are like. And then in the seventh grade, we come in, we do a two-day program with the seventh graders. We come in the first day with the model aquifer, we tell them about the human impact, they're worrying about watersheds and the human impact, so we cover that with what they cover in their, in their schooling. And then we come in the second day, and we bought 16 water testing kits. So we bring four different water samples from around the area, we bring one straight from their school, and then we bring three others from different aquifers in the area, and we go with them, we do four tests. We do chlorine, we do pH, we do iron, and we do hardness. And they get to learn that even though the waters may look similar, or not look similar at all, they can see that all water has different qualities, and there's different minerals in that water, even if you can't see them. So they get an understanding of, just because you can see water, that doesn't mean you know what's in it. It kind of gives them an idea of what's in that. So then they have also a pre and post test that they can use, so that they kind of learn that information and, and can carry it on, so that they know more about their water, so they know that it's really important to save it, that they're not just letting all that water go to waste.
Do you also teach conservation to them?
Yes, yes.
And all?
And all three, yeah.
Did about 6,500 kids last year, 20 kids at a time in the classroom, also doing adult education, got a lot of the real estate groups that are now, we went to them because on their, on their real estate forum, it, when, when they, a piece of property changes, that person has to answer the question, "Did you know that you're in a groundwater conservation district?" Where most people have no earthly idea, wouldn't have a reason to know. So we went to the Realtors, and we educated them that that needs to be a yes, you just need to write that, and then when, ask them the question, "Do you have a water well?" Because if you got a water well, you should go and register your well, because those guys protect your well, they protect your property. You know, the biggest myth, as y'all all know, is that groundwater districts coming out to put a meter on your well and telling you how much water you can pump, and, and that's, that's hard for us to overcome sometimes. So the, I, I actually am getting good feedback from those real estate companies. They are beginning to send them our way, and I, I'm so appreciative of that. So, anyway, we're, we're, any questions? We're certainly open for questions, and appreciate y'all letting us come.
Appreciate what you do.
Thank y'all.
Do we have any idea what impact, when Robertson County starts selling water to San Antonio, what kind of impact it might have?
Yeah, I do. We, we've modeled that, Judge. The, if, if all 50,000 acre feet go out, and I'll, and I'll speak to the, to the Simsborough, because 35,000 of it's Simsborough water, if it starts going out over the next 50 years, that 35,000 acre pumping a year, acre fit, will decrease our artesian pressure by about 15 feet out here in the well field. So, it's, it's not what everybody thinks. Everybody thinks the water's just gonna go away. Actually, in that, in the 2010 plan, when, when they did their DFC planning, that Burleson County or Post Oak Savannah had, and, and the groundwater management area had already put 20,000 acre feet of pumping, had already been plugged in, because they knew somebody was gonna come in the future and move water out of. That was, that's been the plan for a very long time. Met Water's been over there, Blue Water's been over there. They knew somebody was gonna come at some point, so they'd already plugged in 20,000. We plugged in the full 35,000, and I think by 2020, I just read another article this morning, they're on schedule to have water in that pipe in 2020. If, if nothing else, I mean, it just looks like that's gonna happen, and, you know, my thoughts, I've told everyone, is if I'm an investor, I want a full pipeline, and I want to sell them 50,000 acre feet of water, because that's the way the investors get their money back. So I think in this next round, when we, when we get past this one, I think we'll not see, we've, we just kind of ramped that up over time in the model, I think we'll see it go right up to the 50,000 and, and have that effect. So, it's not, again, it's not the level that most people think. We probably actually, and, and the other districts, or our neighbor to the west, has always said, "We affect them more than they affect us," and that actually is the truth. We, we have about a 75-foot artesian reduction on them, where they only have about a 15 on us, so that's about the number.
Okay. What do you think when they get that deal done, when they finally do, when all that gets taken care of, that there'll be some others that will try some other areas?
That's hard to say. I mean, you just, you, of course, the, any of the, anybody that wants to come in and, and transport water, they can certainly do that, but you don't wanna, I don't think you wanna get up close to those big pumping areas. You need to go find areas where you can get in and you don't have the interference drawdown. So, you know, if, if it were gonna happen, in my opinion, if it were gonna happen, it would be west of the river, the Vista Ridge, which is right on the Burleson-Leed County line, and, and east and west of the Bryan College Station A&amp;M well field. It's gonna be somewhere, if, if there's one to be done, it, it would be out in that Caldwell kind of area, I think. But, you know, that's hard to say, it really is. You also have to have, remember, you've got the river that can be used as a transport. So, rather than building a pipeline, you put it in the river, so it may come in along, along the river, to be able to put water in, get a bed and banks, and send it down. I think you'll see more and more, but I mean, it's, it's certainly, everybody needs water, and they're gonna come to the place where there is water, so.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate y'all, thank you.
Appreciate the work you do.
B is update from emergency management about local emergency planning committee grant 2016-2017 from TCQ. Michelle.
Good morning. I thought I would share, or give you guys an update on the, on what is happening with that grant that went, we, we put a, an item through the court agenda back in August to apply for a grant through the Brazos County Local Emergency Planning Committee, and it was basically on behalf of City of College Station Fire Department and City of Bryan Fire Department. TCQ came up with a very lucrative grant this year, grant opportunity this year that we didn't feel like we wanted to pass on, and we saw it as an opportunity to get some, some badly needed equipment, particularly for our hazardous materials, regional hazardous materials team, which is housed under the College Station Fire Department. And so we made applications for that grant again, and, and got word about a week or so ago that we actually got granted money from that funding source. The contract had to be signed the 23rd and returned, but I also wanted you to know what, we didn't get, we had quite a laundry list of things that we wanted to, to get for the, both fire, both fire departments. We were only given a partial, partial commitment of money towards that list, and I included in your packets exactly what equipment we are going to purchase, or we were given approval to purchase. Most of that equipment, again, is going to go to the hazardous materials team housed with City of College Station, and then two of the multi-ray pro units are going to go to the City of Bryan for their use on hazardous materials calls as well. We're, we're pretty excited, obviously, 92,000, a little over $92,000 is, is a great deal of money, and I, we feel like the equipment that it will purchase will go to great use in our region. Any questions?
Thank you, Michelle, thank you for continuing to run the grant. I know that sometimes they can be very aggravating, the paperwork and all that comes along with... She wants to speak.
She's doing that one herself.
Well, correct, that one, Kim Sullivan actually is the chair for LAPC this year.
She'll do all the paperwork.
I'm the treasurer, I'm the treasurer for the LAPC, and so I will be doing the reports, and this is one that we have to get on right away, because we have to close it as of the end of this year. And I will absolutely second what you just said about the aggravation that comes along with these grant opportunities, but I think we still need to look for them, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll consider take action on agenda item 4322. Number four is proclamation 17-016, recognizing the 183rd Recon Aviation Company on their Vietnam service. Motion made seconded. I don't see John. Uh-uh, yes it is. And I don't see John or anybody here to, to receive it, but I know they've got a, a Saturday morning at 9 o'clock, I think they've got something out of Veterans Park. They've got some other things going on, I think, maybe even Thursday and Friday, but Saturday morning, I think they've got something out of Veterans Park, so it's a good recognition, and I want to thank John for bringing his, this, this one that he served in, and so this is some people that he served in Vietnam while he was over there. So, motion's been made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number five, proclamation 17-017, declaring March 30, 2017, Bryan College Station Chamber of Commerce Chamber Day.
Motion to approve.
Motion made seconded, discussion.
I urge all of Brazos County to participate in Chamber Day since we are title sponsors.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number six is approval for Barbara Roberts, Administrative Services Manager, Juvenile Department, to attend Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, JDAI, National Falls Enter-Site Conference in Orlando, Florida, on April 16 through 19, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number seven is approval of donated inmate property for unclaimed clothing and miscellaneous items from the jail. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number eight is reappointment of the following Homeland Security Advisory Committee for period 4-1, 2017, through 3-31, 2018.
Move approval of A-30, second.
Motion made seconded to approve A-30, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number nine is request for permission from Michelle Mead to sign six sub-grant applications, FEMA Form 90-91, as part of a continuing disaster recovery efforts from May 26, 2016, storm, severe storms.
Motion second.
Motion made seconded to approve of the below the six sub-grant applications, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 10 is payment authorization to West in the amount of $279.32 for a monthly subscription of logbooks to the county attorney's office, and the amount of the invoice exceeded the amount of the invoice.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 11 is payment authorization for AMA towing in the amount of $175 to pay for emergency towing service, 3/4, 2017, purchase orders not obtained in advance.
Motion to approve.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Request from Information Technology Department to approve change order for Tri-Tech input form RMS project to acquire licensing for a test environment, half the cost of the change was paid for by City of Bryan.
Motion to approve.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 13 is award contract number 17-260 for jail pharmaceuticals to contract pharmacy services.
Motion to approve.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 14 is award bid contract 17-270 hydrating line, and I think the recommendation was to Austin White Line. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 15 is renewal of contract 17-288R for solid waste hauling and recycling with Texas Commercial Waste. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 16 is renewal of contract 17-289R, landscape maintenance with Green Team's End.
Move approval.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 17 is renewal of contract 17-292R, cemetery slurry from Southern Cement Slurry LLC.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Opposed. Motion carries. Number 18 is approval of contract 17-294, strong survey for miscellaneous projects, total contract is not exceeding $126,925.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion.
I'm sorry, was that Mr. Berry that made the motion? She did. And I second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 19 is tax refund application for following.
I move approval for A through I.
Motion made seconded. To approve A through I, discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 20 is budget amendments, budget amendments FY 16/17, 26.1 through 26.7.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 21, personnel change status.
Move approval.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 22 is payment claims, claim paid by Brazos County, claim number 7154041 through claim number 7154225. Move approval. Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 23 is search report on inmate population, sheriff.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, our, in the last 24 hours, it's 639 inmates, 553 of those were male, 85 female. We have 56 with ankle monitor on home confinement and 19 pending.
Thank you, sheriff. Number 24 is announcement of interest items in possible future agendas. Number 29, number 25 is call citizens' input and/or concerns. Number 26 is adjournment.